Ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Prince, go on, say the invocation, please.
Let's pray. Precious and loving God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that we enjoy. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege to live in such a beautiful place. Lord, we thank you for the citizens that dedicate their time to helping this be a better county for all of us. Lord, we pray that we make the right decisions and take the right directions for this county and for the future of the county. Guide and direct all that we do and say these things we're asking you. Holy name, Christ sakes, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Prince. I want to change the agenda a little bit. We've got a head-on of, uh, Mr. D.W. Miles going to speak to us about 21 Road Market in Miles' job fair.
Mr. Chairman, according to our policy and procedures, all requests must be placed at least three days, working days before the meeting date. You have popped on us approximately 20 pages of additional material that came in today. I don't know if they meet the criteria. I will vote no for any changes to the agenda other than Monday, the one that was published one week ago. It requires unanimous vote. I believe that settles it.
You have another change up to resolution, same thing, or, right? Resolution support for the...
It was added. Meet the three working day requirement. I would point out that this is exactly the scenario that Commissioner Bobby Irwin pointed out approximately two to three meetings ago. Whenever we are popped in the middle, we have no time to research or to ask for guidance.
You still need to take a vote, even if it's going to be...
Excuse me?
I think you still need to take a vote. I know you voiced your opinion, but for the...
Yes, I agree. I'm just advising the board that I will vote nay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on the D.W. Miles speaking, please?
Nay.
In favor, D.W. speaking?
Oh, it's supposed to be for three days.
Right. We've got three to two vote. Motion fails.
One vote's all that's required. It requires a unanimous vote to change the agenda, Mr. Chairman. The board may, by unanimous mode, vote at an item that is not on the agenda.
Okay. We've got the force of resolution support. Do I hear a motion to accept? Motion fails. Okay. I want to move on down to a public hearing. Wait a minute, excuse me. Motion on the minutes for 519, 61, 611, 615. I trust everybody has looked those over.
Mr. Chairman, I've looked over the minutes and everything, and they're taking a little bit of a change from what we've had. They're very, very sketchy. I don't know if that was something time-wise or if that's what's going to be, what's going to happen in the future, but they're just not very detailed. And the minutes go into our record, and that's what people have to look back at the history of what goes on at the meeting. So I just make that comment on the minutes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Take a motion, we'll approve.
Second.
A motion, second, enter for discussion. In favor, raise your right hand. Five oh, motion passes. Move into the public hearing at this time. We want to open the floor for the public hearing on the name change. On Kelly's Way to Henderson, Henderson Evans Way. Anyone have anything you want to say about that? If not, see you none. Would entertain a motion. I know. A motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what's...
Excuse me.
What is our motion?
Change it from Kelly's Way to Henderson Evans Way. The money's has been paid, and all that's been already done.
Is that the recommendation of...
I just asked if anybody had any opposition. I mean, uh...
Have that paperwork?
Was, now, Ms. Williams, Thursday last day. Believe there's some references. What we traditionally, how we traditionally handle that is the way I understood. This is gonna, if we approve it, I think we're breaking precedent that's in the past. It's not there to me, but I'm not comfortable about opening up, potentially opening... Indeed it is.
You want to speak?
Evening.
Evening.
Um, in this particular situation, we had a petition come in to change, obviously, the road from Kelly's Way to Henderson Evans Way. Um, typically do not approve road names that are a first and last name, and so I interpreted it to be Henderson Evans being a first and last name, even though the two names were combined into one. So, that being said, I denied the petition. There was no second name listed on the petition, so I didn't have a second name to go to. So whenever I approve or deny a road name, then I go to the fire chief, and they have to approve or deny it as well. So I went to the fire chief, and he also denied it, based on the fact that it was a first and last name and that it could be confusing to emergency personnel should they have to respond. So, in that case, we both had denied it. I took it to Michael. He said it needed to come before you all so that y'all could decide if it was approved or not. Like I said in the past, we have not approved first and last names. It's not in our policy to do so. I've always denied those.
I was not aware of that. I remove my, I rescind my motion.
Motion is rescinded. I do have a question. Don't use first and last names. Not general knowledge, but there's an Allegheny County native by the name of Joe, Tom Jones. Tom Jones owns 137 NRA rifle competition records. If we wanted to recognize the native son of Allegheny County by naming a road in Ennis where he was born, we couldn't do that by that policy.
I would say the court could. I mean...
Can imagine.
Absolutely. It's been six months, so I'm getting, I'm using that new card a little, a little over here, but I'm going to use it again. Uh, and Wendy knows where I'm at on this. This is, this is nothing that Wendy and I haven't discussed. So what I did is I went and I got a copy of every road name here in Allegheny County, A to Z. I went through it. I looked at it, and certainly, not calling the question of anyone, but there are a number of roads, as you all probably know, that are confusing by name. And I won't go through the list, but I will assure you that there's not a page, A through Z, that does not have several of my highlighted marks on there that, to me, are confusing. Now, to people that run these roads every day, maybe not. But there's names such as Mitchell River Court, Mitchell River Ridge. I mean, there are very similar names all throughout this listing. I understand completely about the first and last name, but I also know that this listing identifies, I'll use this one, it identifies Johnson Potts Lane. Don't know how we interpret Johnson Potts as first or last name, but that is an actual road name on the listing. So when we're talking about setting a precedent, I think maybe we've already done that, if that's the type of, if that's what we're looking at. Now, I know that the young lady that requested this is in the audience, and I've told her on the phone several times that I would share with the board exactly what I have found, and I have done that. And I don't name the roads. I don't have that ability, but I do have the ability to identify what you have done, whether it be this sitting board or previous boards, and what exists out there. So I understand that Henderson Evans could be considered first and last, but I also see other examples that I could identify just as easily.
Adam, if you have comments, would you please come to the microphone so that we could record and the public can hear?
My name is F.H.E. Henderson. My husband's name is Tony Evans, who's our first cousin to Mark Evans here. Our name together, if you were our social friend and you sent us a Christmas card, you would send it to F.H.E. and Tony Henderson Evans. It's one word. Our mailbox, we have two here in Allegheny and several in Buncombe, Madison, and Yancey Counties. They all say Henderson Evans, one word. It would be sexist and terribly misogynist to allude that a name cannot be whatever you wish it to be at this day and age of 2020. If I was from Somalia and had a very foreign and exotic name that I would not be able to announce as a Scottish person, it would be wrong, and it would go against everything that's right to deny that. This, this name change is based on, it's less than 15 letters. It is not a first and last name. It is one word. There is no hyphen or asterisk or any other such marking in it, which is against the rules. It abides by every single one of the dictates that are laid out when you look online as to what is a name and how it's going to be named. Mr. Kelly passed away. He had a beautiful life. My husband and I, we have farmed this for over 10 years together, and we hope to make this our forever grow old and die of old age home. It's a very special place to us. We appreciated Mr. Kelly, but we want it to be ours. We want the road to say Henderson Evans Way as it said Kelly's Way, and that's important. I'm willing to answer any possible questions. I'm so sorry. Did you need to read my lips? I just realized. Anyway, if there's any questions, I believe I certainly can answer it, but again, it is one word. It is under 15 letters, as Mr. Carter will explain, and if you look online, it must be 15 letters or less. It must not have any hyphenations or anything of the sort like that, and it must not be a first and a last name together. It's either, you may either have a first name or you may have a last name. This is our last name. Anyone have any questions?
I think everybody's good. We appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before we call for a motion?
See, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just, I go to the chief for this, the fire chief for this district, and I'd change based on the same rule and the confusion it may cause for emergency responders, since this sounds like the first and last name being used as a road name. Go by what, what the policy is with GPS and the I.S. and the, and the fire chief's recommendation.
We have names of all sorts, though.
Wendy say this, this started after the initial naming happened?
Um, we inherited some names before our actual 911 address and started. There, several names were named on plaits, so we inherited those from the plaits, but after that was done, then the rules were set in place that no first and last names, such as Johnson Potts, that was a name on a plat.
We've also made no efforts to change those road names. They don't meet the policy now. They don't meet the policy now. And if they're a legacy, we either let them go or we ask them to be changed. We set precedent.
Well, they were grandfathered in. I inherited those.
This is their last name and how we can deny it?
We have a set rule of policies that we follow. If the policy doesn't work, then we need to look at changing the policy.
I'm still...
If the policy works, then we stay with what we've got.
I'm still looking for the paperwork. We don't have any paperwork other than that that's online?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Bring to the confusing. What, what, what could be confusing? I mean, I have my thoughts, but if, what are we, are we trying to keep clear as far as the name?
Well, it, my interpretation is that Henderson Evans isn't a word necessarily. It's not...
Well, and let's just, let's not use that one, but just a fictitious one, for example. I mean, if you use somebody else's name, it could be confusing about...
I don't think I understand what you're looking for.
Every road has a, has a name. The name is whatever is established. Whatever it's called, I mean, why could it, truthfully, they all can get kind of confused. And especially whenever they were named after I was grown up. Here all my life, a bunch of them had names that, that we named them in the community. And then whenever they actually put the official name on them, it was something else. But whatever a road name is, it's advertised as that. I don't, I don't get what could be confusing like to the fire chief. It's confusing to find whatever the road name may be.
Just in the fact that it sounds like a first and last name.
They would use that maybe when they're getting directions to go on the call?
Not sure of the particulars.
The old communicator in me, if I may, Mark, want clear names that you can pronunciate in case you've got background noise coming through, you've got static on the, on the frequency. Sheriff, if you deal with this every day, you, it can be ambiguous.
Issues. Have names. Have, uh... Nelson, but if you have Mainz Road, Midge Road, Low Road, those similar...
Me, on the basis that it's not too, it's not a first and a last name, really is not. Couldn't meet the reason why the fire chief denied it. Correct meeting that? As you said, it's a first name and a last name. Is that a combination or anytime a first name or a last name is used?
I don't see the deal if it's on, if it's on the mapping system and then dispatch and it says labeled as whatever the name is. They pull all that information off that when they send a message or whatever. I don't see a big problem.
To me, it meets the guidelines unless we're going to change the guidelines.
I do, too. We do.
I'm inclined to agree that it does meet the guidelines because in Europe, it's nothing common to have hyphenated names.
I think after tonight, they'll remember where it is. Any more discussion?
You want to renew your motion, Mr.?
I'll renew, I'll re-nominate.
You remotion your motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve and has to submit it. Got a motion to hear a second.
Let's, let's hear what the motion, or see what she's going to type up.
He typed up.
That's it?
Proposed road name change to approve it.
Got a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
To approve or disapprove?
Approve. Approve.
Go against our policy is what we're doing?
It does not go against the policy.
It doesn't go against the policy. It's not a first and a last name.
It's because of my mask and his cochlear implants that he did not hear my verbiage was stated, "It is just one last name. It is in no way a first and last name. It is only one last name." I gave a story such as if you sent me a Christmas card, if you sent it just to Henderson or just to Evans, we are highly offended and that would be rude and ignorant behavior in 2020.
I just, I just look at what the fire chief wrote and what Ms. Williams wrote, that based on what she has done in the past, it is going against her policy. I understand the vote.
Got a motion in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? It's four to one. Motion goes.
Thank you, Wendy.
Chairman, I believe when we were talking about the agenda items, we failed to approve or make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I know it was discussed, but we did take votes not to add items to it. But I do not believe that there was a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Which agenda? Original that came out a week ago?
Original ones, yes.
Okay. The original agenda, I will get, uh...
Got a motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
Question, second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Sorry about that. Public comment time. Any, any citizen have anything they want to say? Please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, moving on down. Sheriff's Department, Mr. Brian Maines.
Thank you for your patience, Sheriff. This is going to be easy for you guys.
Are you sure? You want to bet?
Was he sitting in the room, sir? I'm not sure. But I say that, I say that because he took my wife some flowers and I'm offended at Mr. Irwin. So if my, if my wife leaves me, I'm coming to see you. So, but then I'm going to pray for her. So thank you guys for having me here tonight. So I gave you all a handout in front of you. So over the last several years, I've been in law enforcement since 1992. And, you know, I've been a part of several undercover drug operations. I've been a part of thousands and thousands of vehicle stops where we, you know, got drugs out of cars. A lot of these calls that we go on, whether it be drug related, domestic violence related, we'll see kids either in the car, in the houses, on the streets as we're dealing with individuals. So what this does is it, it shows that, that a lot of kids in communities all around the nation, including Allegheny County, they see lots and lots of negatives in their lives. And so I think what we're doing here is going to help with that. And, you know, they also see some of the national media coverage that's going on right now around the world and some of the events that has taken place in the last little while and truly over the last couple of years and many years. It shines a negative light on law enforcement sometimes and in their kids' eyes. And, you know, some of the parents, if we're arresting the parents, if we're arresting folks out of cars or out of homes, you know, they don't have a lot of positive things to say about law enforcement whenever we leave, right? And so they're making us be the bad guy a lot of times. So I think it's really important that we, as a sheriff's office, we try to intervene early in the lives of the kids here in the county. And one of the ways that we're trying to do that is by just making positive differences, you know, as, as we go through our communities. And one of the things that we're going to try to do again this year is our second annual Run for a Clause. Okay, last year, the Run for a Clause, we raised about $9,500 on the day of the event. And it was great. The total donations that we received last year was about $15,000. And with that $15,000, we purchased, out of donated money, we purchased over 500 kids' presents. So, and, and the kids, they, they had multiple presents each. And Bill came down and, and he helped us package up some of the gifts and I appreciate that. So it was a massive, massive undertaking. But it, it's well worth it because what I believe is going to happen is I believe these kids, you know, a lot of times they hear negative things about law enforcement from their parents. But I really think that whenever law enforcement shows up at the schools with truckloads, I'm talking literally truckloads of gifts and pushing buggy after buggy, or for the folk that's not from around here, shopping cart and shopping cart of loads of gifts down the halls of the schools, they're going to see that we love them. They're going to see that we care for them. So I'm really thankful that we were able to do that last year. We had several commissioners come out to the run last year, some just to, just to watch. And we actually had one that ran in it.
And finished.
And he, he actually finished. And, you know, and I appreciate you guys coming, truly. I really do. Mark, you did a good job on that.
I do, I will clarify, ran is a pretty liberal word for what I did. I did that a little bit in there once in a while.
You did a great job. You did a great job. And if you guys can recall, some of the videos from last year, we had the, the little girl, she only had one leg and she finished that event. She ran the whole way. What an amazing effort that was. And I tried really hard to make her famous, too. You know, we, we put her on WXII. We put her, I sent it to Fox, to CNN, to MSNBC. I sent it to President Trump. I sent it to Cooper, Virginia Fox, all of them. And, and a matter of fact, she got several letters from all of them. So it's, it was pretty cool for her. You know, it really helped her a lot. So we're going to be doing that again this year. September 12th, we're going to try to make it an annual event to be held on the second Saturday of September. So that's, that's the week of September 11th, Patriot Day. So I think that's fitting for law enforcement to reach out and make differences in people's lives. So we're going to do that again this year. You have the flyer. And if you want to look at the flyer real quick, it says the second annual Running for a Clause. You know, we're in partnership with the Allegheny County Employees Wellness Committee. They're doing a great job helping us out. Again, this year, we have a $15,000 goal. And if for some reason, due to the COVID-19 that we have to cancel or if we have weather issues or other issues, you know, we're going to be keeping the donations. So we're not going to be offering any refunds. So, but it is for a great cause. And also, if you'll show the video, please. See any sound or hear any sound? If you can imagine humming the tune of Here Comes Santa Claus, that would probably be helpful to you. There's a couple of our deputies, supermans, pulling up the rear there. Thousands of dollars worth of gifts. So we all got together and packaged those thousands of dollars worth of gifts. We had some county employees, sheriff's office employees that volunteered their time. Bill came out and helped. Some students come out and help. Here's, as we were giving out the, the gifts to the kids, their eyes would just light up. And so in every bag, we had a coloring book. We had gloves. We had toboggans. We had other Christmas gifts. And I'm going to tell you, now, all of us that have kids know that you could, you could spend $1,000 on a gift and a dollar on another gift, they're going to migrate toward the dollar gift a lot of times. And to be honest with you, gloves, they loved the gloves more than they loved anything else. They would put the gloves on and say, can I keep them? Can I keep them? Can I wear them home? So praise the Lord, we were able to do that for the kids and I appreciate the, the opportunity to do it again. So come on out and join us, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Chairman, I would encourage any commissioners that can to go out and help them when they pack or anybody else. That's a fun, that's all, getting all those ready, that is a fun event right there.
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Have you resolved the issue of how you're going to pay for the gifts whenever you order them?
Yes, and I appreciate everybody's help on that, too.
Right.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. EMD update. Mr. Nick Hawkes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, we've, I've talked to you briefly about this last meeting and we've put together some more of our information. I'll go through and hit several bullet points for each and every one. Once I finish, if you have any questions, let me know and we'll, we'll try to answer them as best as we can. Before we get started about what all we've done, I want to give you just a little bit of brief information about what EMD is and what we've been talking about. So EMD is a certification and software the dispatchers receive and use. The system is designed to ask questions which will help EMS better understand symptoms before they arrive at a call. Not only will the dispatchers be EMD certified, but they will also be emergency law enforcement dispatch certified and emergency fire dispatchers as well. This software will also include a first aid information to include TCPR, that's telecommunicator CPR. And according to the American Heart Association, each year EMS assesses more than 380,000 Americans with sudden cardiac arrest. TCPR is designed so that a dispatcher can administer information to a caller that gives clear direction to aid that person with CPR. The sheriff has been very vocal about the importance of EMD since taking office. And the state has actually helped us a little bit, pushed us along with the process due to legislation being acted that mandates all telecommunicators to be certified as EMD dispatchers. And we are now in compliance. During the winter months, we obtained approval to use approximately $49,000 of E911 state funds to purchase EMD software through Power Phone Incorporated. It's left the county owing only $3,000 for this, this great big software that's going to be so valuable to us. The software will be installed on the sheriff's office. The software will be installed on the sheriff's office server and is integrated with the computer-aided dispatcher, the CAD system. We are waiting for that last component of this due to the COVID. They've not been able to come down from Boston and upload that onto our server. This, again, is going to be a three-phase plan. Phase one was the past year dispatchers received their certification and EMD software. This just concluded as of July the first. Phase two will begin this current budget year. We will begin upfitting the communication center with all the equipment needed for a second dispatcher to be on shift around the clock. We believe there are some state funds we can access to assist with this equipment. I spoke with, I don't see Wendy now, but I've already spoke with Wendy, and we've been in contact with the E-911 board down in Raleigh, so we think we can get a vast amount of that money through the state. Phase three is tentatively set to begin in July of 2021, but if by some miracle the county's finances improve, we would like to start sooner. This phase deals with the addition of personnel to man the second seat system. We are looking forward to getting our updated 911 EMD system in place. We are one of only six counties currently in the state that does not have the emergency medical dispatch system. Believe the system will save lives of Allegheny County citizens, and we'd like to thank everyone who has assisted in making the emergency medical dispatch system possible, to include County Manager Michael Carter, Wendy Williams, who is not here now, the Budget Committee, and of course, the Board of Allegheny County Commissioners. We appreciate your help. Any questions?
Everything is in compliance with the three-phase step to keep us in compliance with the state?
We are in compliance with the first step. We're again starting on the second step this year.
Do we have any further questions?
Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep.
I'd like to thank you guys for the long, hard work hours you've been putting in on this stuff for the last several years to get it rolling.
Especially in the current atmosphere.
Moving on down to general business. Participation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the county attorney if she has additional information to provide.
I've done some research to try to find if there's any other body of law that would enable you to do what you're really wanting to do. And I can't find authority to do what you're wanting to do as far as having remote participation and votes remotely at this time. You've talked about doing is calling in, having discussions, so long as there's a quorum present physically, I think you can do that. I think it's a little more questionable whether or not you can take a vote remotely, but I know you can't take the deciding vote remotely. And I think the only thing it would require to make the changes would be just a vote of the board to change the rules of procedure that you normally adopt on the first Monday of December. You can do it earlier.
So we'd have to change our policy and procedures, which now allude that we have a capability.
I think it needs to be more in line with what the decided decisions have been.
This day of Zoom, I'm watching state legislature.
I understand.
Whole committee meetings on Zoom. They have not passed the legislation that will allow us to do this.
I think there's been a bill proposed, but I could not find where it has passed.
That's, was my feelings.
I did find where it had been introduced, but I have not found where it was actually enacted.
How we can do it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table indefinitely until we get clearer guidance from the state of North Carolina.
I second that. I'm going to motion second table indefinitely. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. I vote indefinitely we go. Next is the courthouse update, old and new.
Chairman, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to roll the item two and three together, just to kind of do a facilities update altogether, including the COA.
Do we have any objection?
No objections, Mr. Chairman.
First item we'll talk about is the courthouse. And I know the board is aware that there have been some identified concerns within the courthouse, the existing courthouse. They range mostly as a result of some water infiltration within the building. There are a number of walls within the facility that are showing water damage. There are some stairwells. There are some rooms throughout. They're not focused primarily on one wall, they're throughout the building. So that has generated some additional concerns in trying to determine what the cause of that is. We actually brought in HDH Associates. They came in, they did some moisture measuring of the surface walls. They have did inspections of the facility to determine if there was any additional concerns or growth within the facility. And most recently came thermal nuclear exam of the roof and some of the window areas of the courthouse. And for those that are not aware, there is a membrane-lined roof on probably eighty percent of that courthouse facility. Remaining roof is the actual tin that was placed on it many, many years ago. And along with this tin, as most things were done back in those days, there were coatings that were applied, and those are still there today. It has been determined that some of the concerns with some of the infiltration of water around that tin portion of that roof. And I will tell you, and I'm getting this information today, so some of it you have received and some of it I have just received. But I will tell you that as far as the roofing goes, it's probably going to be a good idea we continue to discussion on that. We also need to look at ways if a replacement scenario is something that we get to in the near future. First, we need to look at ways on which to remove the existing. That is not a simple task because of the material that is on that tin as a sealant. There will be specialized individuals that will have to come in and remove that. Also, with the windows, some of the windows are questionable, I guess is a way to put it, in their installation. That's why there has been some moisture seepage below some of the existing windows. So that is another item that we're going to have to look at, is getting a full accounting of all the windows of concern. There has been some samples of the material taken. Those materials, the samples, have not came back yet due to the labs being closed for the holiday last week. But they should be back well in advance of your next meeting for us to further talk about that. All in all, there's going to be some construction that's going to have to occur at that facility. And when I say construction, I say most likely the roof of the tin portion replacement, window replacement, there could be some walls that are torn out and reconfigured, and there will be some humidity concerns that will have to be addressed as well. So that facility definitely on the radar. Anybody has any questions about the courthouse?
You're saying that the roof and the windows especially need to be looked at, or part of the roof?
Yes, sir.
What type of timeframe are you talking about? Immediately? Is it an emergency? About six months from now?
No, sir. I'm saying that once the results come back from the testing, I'll be back in front of this board asking for some type of action. It does us no good to address the lower portions without fixing the top portion. Pretty immediate. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The roof is mainly the metal, the eighty percent portion or thereabouts that you said was membrane, is that?
It seems to be intact for the most part. There are some areas where they have had to do multiple patches, and that has primarily to do with maybe the angles in which some of the understructure lays that are questionable. Those are, as they described it, those are simple fixes. That's a heat-welded material, so it's a simple heat weld process to reattach. But the bulk of the concern is at the overlying tin. Any other questions? Courthouse?
So bottom line, whenever we rehabbed that courthouse fourteen years ago, did not completely cover the roof, left a portion that is original from 1936, the rebuild after the fire in 1933, January of 1933.
I do not know that it goes back that far, but you did not replace it. Yes, sir.
That's the old crimp roof.
Sir, the very shiniest ceiling on it.
So we halfway did the job?
I would say a little more than halfway, but.
Still an Allegheny ham repair.
Still work to do.
Everybody knows what a ham is.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on down to the early voting conflict.
I believe we have an update on the council on aging, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to try to merge them. I'm just trying to do them building by building so that we can. Okay. So next one we will talk about is the new council on aging facility. And the remaining work, I try to break these down into three sections. The office section, what is called the common area, and then the kitchen area. So in the office section, there are two things left to finish in that, that is install the countertops for the receptionist desk and for the CAT five lines to be pulled. Then that area is complete. So it's almost a hundred percent. The common area left to do is install the carpet into the entryway. There's a one-door trim that needs painting, some baseboard that remains, the hot water heater needs to be installed, the washer and dryer needs to be installed, a mop basin, and again, the CAT five lines. So that one is probably around eighty percent. The last area is the kitchen area. Again, we have some door trim, we have a double door to put in, have to install the hot bag food counter, the cabinets, which are actually going in today, the kitchen appliances, the CAT five, and a three-bay sink. So that one's probably around fifty percent. The anticipated completion date is, as I've mentioned before, is still July 31st. So we hope that over the next three weeks that this is in moving condition. Several conversations with the staff and with Karen, and everything seems to be going accordingly. We are getting back on track, and I have no reason at this point to think that July 31st is not a good date. Questions on that facility?
Floor in the kitchen's been done?
Kitchen.
Floor in the kitchen?
Been sealed. Yes. Then we will move on to the old council on aging facility. And as the board is aware, we've had different discussions about the facility and the plans and the ideas behind that. I think I mentioned at the last meeting the desire that I had to bring on an engineering firm to give us a plan as opposed to what we were operating off of. And in looking back, Hemp Hill Randell Associates was a firm that had done some preliminary work on the facility back in 2018. Naturally, I reached out to them because they had some insight knowledge already. They came up last week, they brought three of their engineers, they went through the old COA, top to bottom. Found some things that were good, they found some things that were questionable. Sent each of you out a letter that I received today from the group with their understanding of the facilities, a brief explanation of the floor plans and cost estimate. Don't have to remind anybody, and I really don't even want to say it, but I will. County, a while back, did a financing package, nine hundred thousand dollars. It had several components within that financing package. And I will just go down the listing. The new senior center originally was estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Date, spent three hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars on that, and it's not done. There was twenty-five thousand dollars placed in what's called Senior Citizens Center Furnishings. Twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars left in that line. So there is a positive number there. The 85 East Whitehead Street is your old COA. That was originally estimated at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There's a hundred and fifty-five eight-eighty left in that line at this point. BDC renovations was 201-751, that's what was factored in. And 186-677-91, and the remaining was transferred up into the new senior citizens facility. Ninety South Main Street was factored at 34-852. There was 25, two utilized, the remaining 96-52 went to your new senior citizens facility. Architect fees was figured at 10,000. There was 91 hundred and ten dollars spent. The remaining 890 went to your new senior facility. Legal and bank fees was 28-78, those are gone. Contingency was factored at 82-682. There was eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars of that utilized. Sixty-four thousand of that was moved to your new senior sense. What that means is you have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and three dollars and thirty-nine cent left in that financing package to complete these projects. Of the projects remaining, the old council on aging facility will be your most expensive. The new council on aging facility is the most expensive one in that package. So as you look through, and this may be, this may be a Donna question. I know we talked about the engagement of a firm to provide. I think we even talked about, there's some type of emergency provision. I have an estimate for the old council on aging facility, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I didn't drop the mic, it just got quiet in here, but.
It's quiet for a while.
This is, these are real numbers. That's where we are on that facility. I can tell you that in addition... I can tell you that in addition to getting all this information together, also had the privilege of spending some good time with Susie Gamble. We've talked about it. The original thought was trying to utilize a courtroom that provided for 100-plus seating. That's just not a reality. I have spent some time with her talking about what may be more of a reality as opposed to some of the fictional things that we've looked at. And I believe that the plan that I've identified in the package of 74 seats, think that'll gain judges' approval. Certainly don't fan that either way, but I have a good feeling that we're close on that. We need plans, and we need to get going, and we need to get actual documents. And we need to put the thing out for bid, and we need to get the bids back, and we need to get the facility completed. And I guess I'm asking Donna, understanding the situation that we're in, we consider some type of agreement with Hemp Hill Randell to finish the documents. 29-7 is, well, there's an echo. 29-7 on the architect-engineering fees.
There's nothing statutory that says you have to put that out to bid since it's services. I think the policy of the board has been to get your plates on anything before you do it,
And I can do that. Again, that adds to it. I'm at your disposal. I'm just trying to paint the picture.
Bobby.
Now, these old plans and the new plans from Hemp Hill, there is no jury.
That's correct.
This is, there was no jury to start with from the judge's first conception. Jury was added in by this other person who made these sketches.
In one of the original concepts from Hemp Hill, there was a jury box.
Until the judges said they didn't need the jury.
And when I identified that that was not a necessity, they removed that, which allowed for some additional seating to be applied.
Let's consider the board. Let Michael go ahead. More time, I think we have to, yeah.
One question I have is kind of going back on the current courtroom. A 15-year loan on a project that didn't quite make it. Have any feel for kind of a timeframe this would ever, this fit of the? Are you giving any feedback as to how long, how many years? Think it will?
I'm a day.
The need? Is there?
A spatial study, talking about a years in advance. I do not have any other information than I believe this will take care of the needs as it has been identified.
Just, you can't predict another COVID-19 that comes down the road. It's basically what the judges want right now. If it's 10 years or 15, I don't think anybody has guessed at that number.
And I want to mention that Commissioner Bobby Irwin, he was present when these guys were there. And I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
They spent three and a half or four hours, three men. Went through the basement, up through the attic, and then the crawl space. And if you read their report, there is a little bit of concern about the floor on the main level. The way they talk, that's an easy fix if it's a problem. Overall, there wasn't anything that really stood out as being a major problem. Thing that sort of surprised me is the way the judges want the windows blocked, doors for security reasons. At least halfway up, they have to be some type of security where somebody can't shoot straight in. That adds, obviously adds to the cost. But without the jury box, makes it a lot simpler.
And I will point out that I know there has been some discussion about the second floor of that facility and the possibility of adding the secondary piece app. These plans do not account for that. Whatever thoughts there are about that, if that is a consideration, we need a plan upfront for that.
I don't believe it was a secondary piece app. I believe it was a primary piece app. The primary piece app right now, we cannot put a second. We can't put two people in there and operate. Now, in the secondary piece app, it would be tight, but in an emergency situation, we could. On that.
They talked about the piece app. They deal in these things all the time. And one of their concerns was a generator and the noise and the heat that's generated in that room and the bathrooms.
The secondary.
There would have to be now additional bathrooms, a wall put up to keep people away from piece app people. But then you have the fire marshal who has the other exit that goes out that far end. It became less and less desirable after they talked about some of the problems that they've run in in other places. I think the main thing was the backup generator and the heat that's generated by all the equipment in that one small room.
I believe we're talking about the secondary piece app that exists today because there's no backup generator at the old Council on Aging building.
There's no backup.
Right. So moving the primary, we're flip-flopping them, taking the secondary, put it in the top of the Council on Aging building. Would give us the room, and then we could use the current primary as secondary, hopefully. But all this has got to be approved by the E911 Board before they can come up here. Of course, we also have the new system that's coming online that will be the automatic backup. ACID, I believe, is the name of it.
EffyNet.
EffyNet. Whenever that comes in, that eliminates our requirement for a second location. But eventually, we're going to have to find some place where we can have two dispatchers in. Right now, we're liable because if we, if a dispatcher gets a call and it's a heart attack and someone calls with a shooting, they can't contact anybody.
I think that somebody had mentioned the ambulance building or the, they have a generator.
It's the one that the generator is outside the wall. Yeah.
There would have to be some soundproofing or something done.
Now, we, and not only that, if we move the primary piece app to the top of the Council on Aging building, we are going to have to put in a generator there that will, a Generac that will automatically kick in if it lose power. So it's going to be, it's going to be a process. As far as hooking the, there's no fiber optic lines that I'm aware of that go in there. But I was mentioning to the county commissioner today, we could put in a microwave net which has a 99.99% reliability that would handle the bandwidth required for that, so we wouldn't have to put in fiber optic. Fiber optic is great, but we've got a thing that we've got to consider. It's called backhoe fade. Whenever somebody cuts it with a backhoe, you lose a lot with fiber. So, but the people that are going to be providing that communications link will have to look at that. Think we need, I would suggest to the board that we look at moving that primary piece app to the second floor of the Council on Aging. If you look, you go to where the piece app is right now. There's one person in there. That is the initial, whenever they bring someone in to put them in jail, that's where they go. So you put two people in there. We've got the problem with prisoners or people under arrest coming in. Eventually, we're going to have to move it somewhere. We might as well take it in right now, back to bullet and go for it. Have the dollar thresholds in North Carolina for public contracting statutes. I'm sure your honor's looked at this.
Copy. I haven't read it today.
Okay, well, it's confusing.
It is confusing.
It is terribly confusing. They give us a chart. Construction and repair, up to $500,000 informal bidding.
We under that?
We've got, Lord, I hope we are. But the informal bidding process, we still got to bid it. It's got to be informal, but we can do it. We can do it rather quickly, and that would be.
I think the question really in that regard on the table was 29,000 component for getting the drawings.
Yes, the drawings.
Because without those, we can't go out to bid.
Selection of architect, engineer, surveyor, construction manager at risk, or design-build contractor. Only projects where estimated fee is less than $50,000. We are under an exemption authorization under General Statute 143-64-32.
I believe that's what I said.
That was Randell and Associates.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hemp Hill Randell.
I'm just backing you up, your honor.
Thank you.
But that's 29.
I don't know. Do we need a motion?
Each number gets you what you need to get able to bid.
It could, but with this discussion, again, this second floor does not take in considerations for this piece app. So if the direction of the board is to have them configure this in these plans, it's going to go up.
I think there needs to be a feasibility discussion before we start talking about a dollar discussion.
I agree. But I think that's something that, once that discussion occurs, is something that could be added fairly easily through these documents.
Their assessments that they've already done could basically pose that question to them and get their feedback as to whether or not it's a deal. If not, why not? And kind of get, because I think they're familiar enough with the project at this point.
You're going to.
Working with other counties in that regard, they would. This is in mind.
You're going to see that a lot of these firms that work on these have what they could consider to be standard. And I think I mentioned maybe in an email, you know, anytime you're taking a piece app and you're increasing it by one, whether it's primary, secondary, secondary, primary, a lot of these places are, or firms are going to just let you know that a working standard is typically a mile radius within your existing. And that's because of some of the things that Commissioner John Irwin pointed out with the backhoe theory, cut to your brakes there, et cetera. Obviously, we don't have that ability here to really get into that. But they are well aware. Commissioner Bobby and I have told them that that's a possibility. It's in the back of their minds, so I think it's something that they can can give us. I think it's acceptable. They didn't give us any indication that it would not work in that facility. It's just a change in design is what it would be.
We've also got the hope on the EffyNet that will eliminate us providing a secondary piece app.
Is there a date on that EffyNet? That's my question.
I'm sorry?
Is there a date on that EffyNet?
And I'm, please excuse me. I spent today at the rifle range, and my hearing is shot, so bear with me. The last date that I heard was, I wish Wendy was here, I believe, August of 2021. And we still got the issue where we've got a gap in the fiber optic around the Lake Valley flats around in there. But I can guarantee you it will be in 2021 because we have a bill where we bought all the equipment for that secondary piece app that we will finish paying for in 2021. Other than that, the state of North Carolina was going to pay it off. So I can guarantee you it'll be after we pay off the outstanding debt on that, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Bobby.
If, I think the issue before us is the architect and engineering fees of $29,700 to have Hemp Hill proceed, I would make that motion and with the knowledge that they know that we have the piece app problem that they will have to address at some time if it goes into the old building. I would make the motion to accept the $29,700 fee.
I second that. Got a motion. Second, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand.
Do have a question for the county manager, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is the maintenance department going to do these? Are we going to go out for bid whenever we finally get plans or?
In my brief time here, Commissioner Irwin and I would recommend that we go out terminal service for the renovations. Certainly nothing against our staff whatsoever, but it's difficult for me to understand how they once did certain things and basically channeled all of their time to construction projects. I'm not sure I understand the logic in some of that. So I would recommend you put the thing out for bid.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got to have the plans before you can do the RFP. We're looking.
Two months.
Two months before you can put the RFP out.
Probably.
And we are looking at a month for the RFP to be in the public before we can accept, before we can select a bidder, correct?
I would.
We're running out of time.
I would go a step further and say we'll be lucky to be complete by end of the year.
Won't quit asking you questions because you don't give me the answers that I want to hear. But you do, you give them straight and to the point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and county manager.
Are we finished up on the old and new and ready to roll on now?
Think we need to vote.
Got a motion from Bobby.
I second it.
Second over here. In favor, raise your right hand. Early voting.
Chairman, I actually have something on that as well. In a previous board meeting, also due to the courtroom situation, the Board of Commissioners approved utilizing this room and the secondary room here as an alternate courtroom facility for the upcoming six months. After doing that, a conversation with Sherri Dawson, who does know is your Director of Elections, I asked her to send me an email, and I'll just read that for the record. Due to the possibility of the Commissioners Boardroom being used as a courtroom, I wanted to inform you that there is a conflict. During the month of October, it would potentially be needed for a trial, when it would potentially be needed for a trial. And I think that's the conversation that we've had is the potential for a trial in October. Board of Elections has one-stop early voting, starting on October the 15th through October 31st. Commissioners' Boardroom has been the designated early voting site since before I came to work here. If we were to have to find another early voting site, we will have to send out mailings to every registered voter in the county at least 45 days prior to that. As of June 27, 2020, there are 7,226 voters. If there's an opportunity this can be avoided, it would be greatly appreciated. So again, trying to combine all these facilities into packages, judges are aware that this room has been offered up and all that goes with it. Another alternative that we've looked at is the Black Building out at the Higgins Center. And there are things there that are concerning as much as there are here. You know, when this room was used as a courtroom years ago, little different standards. So I know that on different occasions, I know Commissioner Bobby Irwin and I, we met out there at the Black Building. I know Commissioner Osburn, we've been there. I've met with the sheriff out there. We've tried to look at this thing from a rounded approach. And fortunately, the day that the sheriff and I was going to meet with some judges there, it was canceled. They had some other things that happened. Then learning all of the pieces to these puzzles, I actually sat down and sketched out what collectively we had all talked about, about the utilization of that facility, and presented that to Susie Gamble as well, because I knew she could communicate with the judges and get their feel on it. And she did that. And again, I have a positive feedback as we could entertain that facility as a possible secondary courtroom in this interim also. There are some modifications that will have to occur. It is not off the table. So what I would ask is to allow me over the next couple of weeks to fine tune that a little bit, get some costs associated with what improvements are going to have to be made to that facility. I know that the last meeting, we talked about the potential holding cells here and the costs associated with that and the displacement of individuals and equipment. And I'd like to be able to put that together, compile it, present it to you, also present it to the judges, and hopefully get some type of working understanding on that. It is not out of the question, I can tell you that.
Question, are you talking about moving the early voting to the Black Building or the courthouse?
I'm, I am of the opinion, only me, that we could move the courtroom, the court, to the Black Building and leave the early voting here inside this room.
Could be less cost doing the early voting in the Black Building.
Be. You've still got to bring in holding cells. You've still got to, and that's why I want to compare the two. I want to do an analysis so that you can see what that difference would be.
I thought we had a holding cell back here next to the record room.
Been in each of those rooms and I haven't seen a holding cell.
It was established the way it could be one. It's apparently plumbed the way it could be.
Right now, they're all full of miscellaneous stuff.
The sheriff's department was out there. They were very much in favor of the Black Building, especially for security. It was easier for them to transport. It was easier for them to maintain. There's a room that they can put the prisoners in. The judge would have a small private room. Just worked out, it seemed to work out for everybody. All those windows are high windows. There's no low windows, except in the very front, there's those doors, but there's a wall there. The initial, the initial part of it was, it was very acceptable.
You see it being more accessible, but cost, I would think, would be more.
Better parking facilities too.
I think a big part of it is a or two days spent cleaning up, cleaning out those rooms that have just a lot of stuff in them. And Mr. Carter found a way to possibly store that stuff in one of those trailers that we have down at the fire station, down at the fire training facility, just load the stuff right in it, and then it's there to unload.
We're asking for a couple of weeks?
I would appreciate it.
Are you asking for a consensus of the board, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I am. As well as asking to ask right here if everybody's in agreement with Michael Gordon.
I agree.
Agree, we allow it.
On this, man.
Got the green light there.
Go forth and do great things at no budget.
Need a vote or just a consensus?
Consensus.
I'm a jail mill contract.
Last September, there was the jail mill contract assigned to Garrison V. Wagner doing business as Horizon Bistro. He would like to assign that contract to an LLC that he has formed. It would, the only thing it would change is how checks are written. He is still going to be the person in charge. It's still his business, same location, same price, same everything. Instead of being a sole proprietorship, he's just formed an LLC and would like to assign this contract to his LLC.
Mark move to protect his assets. I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Moving on down, TDA Chairman nomination. Don't have a nomination to make.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Steve Mason.
A second.
Pushing in a second. Any further discussion? By law, in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Next up is discussion approval of the TDA bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. It was discovered that the county commissioners had never approved the bylaws. We can't find copy with signatures on it of the bylaws that, for the Tourist Development Agency. Now, to give everyone some background, the Tourist Development Agency was authorized by the state legislature, and they refer to it as a session law 2011-170. And the dates of approval are in our package. But basically, the state of North Carolina is very specific. Tells us who we can appoint to the board. They've got to have relationship with tourism. It also stipulates that we will, we as commissioners, will appoint the chairman of the board. So it's the only committee that we have in Allegheny County that the county commissioners actually appoint the chairman. So it is a cleaning up and administrative matter, but it's one that we do need to go through the formalities, in my opinion, because the state legislature, if they find out that for 11 years, we have not followed the guidelines of the session law, the act, as I like to call it, they're liable to remove it from us. So, Mr. Mason, we got together with the county manager. He was able to bring in all the minutes. He's very organized. He's very businesslike, and he is aware of the limits that have been placed on the TDA. By the way, just so everybody knows, this law, whenever it was passed, the session law, it stated that if we did not have a TDA, maximum tax that the county commissioners could levy as an occupancy tax was three percent. If we formed a TDA, which we did by ordinance, then we could increase it by an additional three percent, so our occupancy tax would be six percent. The session law also states that we can take out administrative fees as a county because we collect a tax, every penny of it has got to go to tourism. Promote tourism, two-thirds must go to promote tourism. Now, I want to remind the county commissioners, he set in motion authentically Allegheny to promote tourism. Been taking the taxpayers' money, giving it to authentically Allegheny to promote tourism, and we had the capability of asking, getting the money from the occupancy tax, not one penny of which would have come out of a pocket of an Allegheny resident unless at a spat between husband and wife and he went to live in Allegheny Inn or some other facility in the county. Promote tourism. Now, one-third could have been used to sponsor events. So here we are, and includes tourist-related capital expenditures. Been looking, trying to find how we were going to get a new PA system for the fairgrounds for the Sparta Allegheny Volunteer Fire Department Nurse Convention. Here's our source of funds. Now, we don't control, we control the membership as commissioners. We control the chairman. Guess what? Legislature also stated that once a quarter, every quarter, they would tell us what they had done and give us the expense and revenue. Hasn't happened. Once a year, by this statute, they've got to appear before us as county commissioners and tell us what they've done over the year to justify their existence. These bylaws, now granted, they have not fulfilled the guidelines placed upon us by the state of North Carolina, but after this, we need to do it. Contacted every volunteer fire department. They did not know that they could request capital expenditures through the TDA. They didn't know any, all of their fundraising advertisement could have come from the TDA. This is a golden goose. Some people that were aware of the session law have been able to take advantage of $20,000 to buy bands for Music on Main. Cambridge Commerce already received over $27,000 this year. Put in a fire tax, we've got a resource right here. So I've looked over the bylaws that has been presented to us. What I like about the bylaws, they refer to the statute so that, I would like to see it in there, that two-thirds must go for promote travel and tourism, but they refer to the session law, and I believe that that is satisfactory. Mr. Mason is as well-versed as I am on this. We do have some questions though, and that is not on the agenda tonight, but there are some questions. If suddenly we take TDA and they are removed from our immediate supervision, our immediate authority, we don't collect the occupancy taxes, no money. I believe your honor will agree with me on that. We've got to see how it goes.
I think this statute is very specific on what has to happen.
Yeah. I mean, there's very little wiggle room, in my opinion, and I can guarantee you, we do not want Dale Falwell to come up here and audit the books to see where the money's been spent in the past, because that man scares me. We've already got one letter from him. So I, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the TDA bylaws as presented to this board.
Let me get Bobby's question in.
Sure.
I have a question. Do you know that all the active members right now have seen the bylaws?
As far as their board?
These, this new set of bylaws.
Are you talking this board?
Some members have not read them. They've not been presented to them.
You have not read them?
Members you're...
I've read them.
Which board? Our board or the?
TDA board.
TDA board.
I assumed, now, excuse me, let me backtrack. And I believe, Steve, are you here? He came in and presented the minutes, I believe, from January of 2000. It was a couple of years ago. That is the only, the only thing that he told us that had been presented, so it has been. I do not know if the other members of his, of his committee has seen this and they have approved it. I can only assume that they have.
Aren't we the one that have to approve it?
Yes.
And have to accept it?
Yep, yep.
That's a moot point.
Is there a rush to do this tonight?
Well, we haven't done it in 11 years, so I don't think that there's too much of a rush.
I would just, I would just like to be sure that all the current members of the TDA have had a chance to read these new bylaws.
I take it that my fellow commissioners making a motion to table till mid-month?
If there's no emergency, I would ask that just to be sure that their committee has had input. I would ask to table it to the mid-month meeting and have that information provided to us.
Don't we have to pass it first?
No. We pass it, it's their bylaws. They will operate by it. Now, whether they object to the bylaws or not, it make any difference. If we pass the bylaws, we tell them what to do. They are subservient to us, I believe, but I will refer to my learned counsel.
Does the law say that we have to let them approve it first?
No, it does not.
Need to move ahead with it.
Okay.
Wait, I don't know where these came from. You know who drafted these and when they were drafted?
Do not.
It was just put in our package.
Same here. It just magically appeared. I do not know who drafted it, where it came from, or how long it's been in existence.
The only thing that I can tell you is, on the website, they had the bylaws, it was draft. It's been draft for 11 years, or nine years, since 2011. 2011, excuse me.
So I mean, it could be that they were drafted back then, they've been operating under these bylaws the whole time, and they were just never formally adopted. So this should just be a formality to put in place what they've already been using.
It's just clearing up administrative matters, what I'm looking at.
I understand. You're trying to clear up because there's nothing in our minutes saying that they've been formally adopted. It's my belief that they've been operating under these bylaws for, since formation in 2011.
It's a nitpicky thing, but it's, it's one of those administrative things that's got to be done. It's not on our shoulders as commissioners because we're just going by what everybody else has done. In the past, they should have caught this. There should have been quarterly reports. There should have been a yearly report. They should have passed, approved the bylaws. It just didn't happen. And I don't know the ordinance would be, I don't know if they are a 501(c)(3). I've never asked about that. If they're 501(c)(3), North Carolina law says they will have bylaws.
Just stand by asking, just be table for two weeks till our next meeting.
I would have no objection to tabling of this until the mid-month session so that we can ensure that President Board of the TDA has looked at this. we can ensure that present board of the TDA has looked at this. Just want to get it done.
If this is the bylaws they've been operating under all this time?
Maybe.
That's.
That's just, I don't know, but that's what I think. Would like to have that confirmed.
It is without the approval of the county commissioners, the overriding authority.
Which is not on their behalf, that's ours.
That's it. Yep. Not ours, not this board, it's previous boards that didn't take action also.
But it's ours today.
It is now, because we're aware of the situation. Can't pass the buck.
Hey, so we're going to table?
Yep.
Two weeks. Mid-month meeting, huh? Need a motion to table?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Anybody? A second. All in favor of tabling, raise your right hand. All opposed? You to.
We have voted, we have voted to adopt the bylaws.
We have voted to adopt the bylaws.
Very well.
I would just like to refer back to when commissioners said if there was a reason to table something, we would table it, and obviously, that's gone out the window.
You made that motion, right, Bobby? Bobby, you made that motion to table?
I made the motion to table.
They need a little clarity there. Is that right?
You have a motion to table which failed, which means that now you're back to square one.
And we got to vote.
We got to have another motion to table.
Have it voted to approve them, you voted to.
To approve.
Not to table.
Entertaining, no motion.
Motion does not pass.
Made a motion to table it.
Right.
On second. It failed.
Make a motion, we approve the bylaws. Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? This is a motion to pass the bylaws, accept the bylaws. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Three oh. Motion four?
I vote to not accept the bylaws.
I got you. But this motion was to accept that we just voted on.
So I'm voting no.
Right, okay. What was the actual vote, because I missed John's vote. You hear no?
Yea.
Four to one. Okay. Moving on, SRC letter-writing campaign. I'd hear the speaking on that behalf. Susan, okay?
Hi.
Hey.
Thank you all for your long patience tonight. In the budget for the streetscape, it did not include to have the steps redone as you go up the steps going into the courthouse. They're ugly, especially when you compare it to what's been done. And so we're wanting to do a letter-writing campaign to get money that's not county money to improve those steps, and that's what we have in mind. We thought we ought to talk to you all, since the county bill didn't belong to the county, not to the SRC. Is that okay with you guys?
Yes, sir.
Get a motion for that?
Say.
I'll make a motion, we allow them to write the letters, raising funds to replace the steps.
In addition to that, we want to make the landscaping a little prettier, too.
And duplication.
Yes. Please.
You have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Question and a second. Any further discussion? Is this to repair or fix the sidewalks and landscaping?
The stair steps going up and the landscaping.
Who supervises it?
SRC.
The way that it's being done?
SRC.
It's supposed to be part of street, or part of the renovation that the town's doing?
The town is not involved with the steps, are they?
It was not in the plan. The steps were left out of the plan when the original plan was approved and accepted, and the money that's allocated is not for that portion, so it needs to be done while everything else is being done, too.
It does. For motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Resilience, acknowledging the execution delivery by the county school board. Beasley, so we all this evening.
Good. Good. At our last joint meeting with the commissioners and the school board, we presented a resolution to you guys about a savings plan with, guaranteed energy savings plan. We were getting ready to go into agreement with Schneider Electric. Board has approved that resolution, or school board has approved that resolution, and we have gone into that contract. And I have Graham Lewis tonight with Schneider Electric, who would like to come up and present some information to you guys. Graham, I'll turn to you.
Thank you all for your time tonight. This resolution is a template resolution that the local government commission provides for county commissioners before school districts enter into the final contract for the project. So really, the gist of resolution is, because we are creating energy savings for the school district, to then pay back the source of funds for their capital improvements, what the resolution says you all have to do is to approve not to reduce their utility expenditures each year, because those utility expenditures have to be sitting there in their savings to be able to make their payment for the project each year. And so I'm happy to take any questions from you all on it, but thank you again for your time and consideration.
Have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
One quick one comes to mind. What happens if you don't save them enough money?
Yeah, so because it's a guaranteed energy savings contract, the statute, which is 143-6417, says we have to write them a check to cover the difference, so that's why it's guaranteed.
Presentation was a while ago. That's what I was thinking, but I just wanted to.
It was, it was, absolutely.
I like that idea, you writing us a check.
Definitely, definitely.
Push it to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, hear a second?
Second.
Question and a second. Any further discussion? Everybody raise your right hand, five oh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. On to public comment.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all you do. I'm sorry I didn't get here in time to get on the agenda today. I called Thursday and missed you all, but I would like to get on mid-month, if that's okay. We had some very positive things to report to you about the job fund and the Take a Break initiative, things we're doing, and we wasn't going to ask for no money or anything. We've got our own funds, we do that with. And so we'd like to get on the agenda for the mid-month meeting, and there is some conversation about the, the Take a Break, come interstate road market this year. They were going to have it anyhow, whether we did anything or not, because it's not anything we implement there, we just promote it. So we didn't, Virginia's got more restrictive than North Carolina is, and they're going to do different things than what we do. We're not promoting, we just put a small article in the paper about it, we're going to encourage that will of the people, but encouraging everybody to be safe and healthy and that, but we're not promoting, we're not on TV, we're not on anything, but it's the people that does, that does the road market, they do it themselves, and all we do is promote it. So we ask everybody to be safe, and that's, and I'd like to report to you about our results of our job fund and the Take a Break at the mid-month meeting.
Be good, we'll get you on there.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you. Any managers report?
Chairman, I think I've said quite enough tonight. Thank you.
Sir. Commissioners comment? Travis. Bobby?
Hope everybody had a great celebration of their independence, and they'd say, and we could, that's all.
Urban, Bobby?
Just a quick thing about our local hospital, the community college system. As I was told by some people at the hospital, we have 19 graduates at, from Wilkes Community College, working at our local hospital. Plus, we have 30 others that have gotten degrees from the community college system that work at our hospital. I think that's a good, good amount of number for citizens that are from Allegheny, working at Allegheny, spending money in Allegheny. It's, I had the misfortune of having to go to the hospital a few weeks ago, and I couldn't have been treated any nicer. I always ask the ladies where they were trained, and almost all of them always come up with the community college system and Wilkes Community College especially. I just wanted to say thank you to them.
I have no comments. Commissioner Prince?
I think we're lucky in our county not to have more than five cases. I think that's outstanding, and I think our citizens be complimented for being as safe as they can. That's all.
Mr. Urban, John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was at a meeting at a church, and somebody asked me if I had any comments, and I said no, and I got applause, but sorry. A veteran service officer in Allegheny County, right now, I believe, is still a part-time position. The stats, this time in 2019, our veteran population in this county is 811. That is down from last year, 18. The World War II, Korean War veterans, and now the Vietnam veterans are passing, seems like every day. That ranks us in the state at 96th. VA compensation that is coming into this county is $7.83 million. $5.093 million is for compensation and pension. I'm medically retired, so I double dip. Students are receiving $115,000 in this county, that's GI Bill. That is an increase over $61,000 last year. Insurance, $28,000. That's down from last year, $51,000. Medical care, it's down from last year, $2.595 million. That's $9,650 per veteran in this county, which is a state ranking of number 78. We do have a large veteran population, and there's a lot of veterans out there, to be quite frank with you, that are not visiting the VSO, that have injuries that they would qualify for some compensation or perhaps medical care. The classic example, Bobby and I are victims of this, the Camp Lejeune water, where they dumped hospital perk into our drinking wells from 1953 to 1986. There are nine cancers that are considered from that, and additional medical problems. The Army is, Army Air Force, there's exposure there all the time. So if you've served, one day in war, you are automatically covered, see the veteran service officer. If your income reach, is, does not reach a certain level, if you have an honorable discharge, anything other than a dishonorable, I believe, you're going to get treatment. See that veteran service officer, he's there to help you, and hopefully, we will get him out into the community more and more, so that he can make people aware of what he can do to the veterans here in the county. And we aren't even talking about survivor benefits. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I hope everyone had a good, safe Fourth of July, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir.
I will make a motion that we adjourn for personnel, sir.
Okay. Let me read this. Request for closed session, GS statute 143-318, 111.a-6 personnel. We have a motion to adjourn for.
Include April.
Include April, I am H&R. Excuse me.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.